Hello everyone, welcome to 1.5 Degrees, the podcast where together we explore the science, solutions and stories involved in the fight against climate change. I'm your host Heidi Pan, speaking with the professionals behind the latest research, policies, culture and innovations shaping our response to this global environmental challenges. For today's episode, we were joined by Ankur Shah, who is a geospatial data scientist at Climate Engine, to discuss his work in environmental education, passion about nature-inspired solutions, sustainable urban design and more. Ankur assists Climate Engine, a startup focused on satellite data for economic and climate resilience, to enable climate adaptation and mitigation financing with product development, data analysis and environmental research. He's also the Director of Operations at Mycelium, a Huntsville-based nonprofit focused on open-source solutions for accelerating the circular economy along the themes of waste management, food resilience and self-sufficient housing. Ankur also has an academic background in physics and earth sciences and frequently produces informative videos on environmental topics on his YouTube channel, definitely check it out, dedicated to climate education. Thank you so much for joining us today Ankur, it's truly an honor.
Well, thank you for inviting me and having me on this podcast, thank you.
Yeah, no, I feel like we've been kind of in touch on LinkedIn for some time now and just following your work has been super awesome. I guess for listeners, can you tell us a bit more about what it is that you do with Climate Engine, Mycelium and beyond?
Sure, let's start with Climate Engine. So I'm a geospatial data at Climate Engine and at the company, it's a startup, we focus on using satellite data, geospatial data for enabling climate resilience and economic resilience. And we focus on physical climate hazards like wildfires, floods, droughts, hurricanes and so forth, and assess what risk level they have, short-term, long-term, even forecasting that for asset locations of businesses. And the theory of change that we have is that if climate adaptation is a business case, then financing from the private sector will enable adaptation and make decisions that are beneficial to society and not just, well, because they're beneficial to the company, they will be beneficial to society, but we hope to drive finance into adaptation and mitigation through making climate resilience and transparent using satellite data. So my role at Climate Engine is geospatial data analysis and geospatial data product development. That means day-to-day I use a lot of satellite data and code a lot to create algorithms that can assess some kind of risk, climate risk, specific to whatever hazards we choose and also do a lot of data validation, research behind how algorithms are made, so making, just reading a lot of papers if needed. And yeah, it's a coding, research and analysis job. And at Mycelium, it's a nonprofit that I work very part-time because we're not funded as staff members, we are just using grant money for projects to do projects and not fund ourselves at the moment. So that's in my free time or weekends, whenever I have time. Mycelium, as many of you may know, is the fungal network below the soil, it's nature's original internet or biological internet and enables sharing of resources between many trees and plant species in forests. Mycelium is a mode of communication, mode of sharing resources, and it does that without any money. Any, and it's very, it's a network that we want to mimic. So Mycelium, the nonprofit is, wants to mimic the biological mycelium underneath the soil. And we focus on accelerating the circular economy by developing open-source solutions that anyone can use. And those themes that we focus on are food resilience, self-sufficient housing and waste management, so far at least. And we want to push out these solutions so that anyone in the world, mainly in developing countries, can create these, make networks of local communities and then apply them locally. And we wanted to create local networks globally, just like Mycelium has. And my role is mainly product management, project management, also coding whenever needed. One-one example project that we just finished and submitted using a grant was, we created a CNN, convolutional neural network model to identify plastic bottles, HDP, so type-two plastics, milk jugs, aluminum cans and cardboard and glass. And we attached that model, we ran that model on a Raspberry Pi, attached that to motors and basically the Raspberry Pi camera can identify a plastic bottle and then motors can run a conveyor belt and pause at a bin to automatically sort the plastic bottle in an associated bin. So we, we have a chain of bins for each type of waste and then, once you enter the trash piece, the camera takes a picture, identifies it and then the motor runs it to the bin, tilts and drops the waste into the bin. So it's an automated smart sorting trash can that's super cheap to build models, open-source datasets, open-source. Another example is we partnered with many schools, four schools and essentially helped assemble open-source farm bots, which are, Farm Bots is a company that has an open-source design for a robot that can automatically manage a raised bed, raised garden bed, and it can weed and plant seeds and water them and so maintain the raised bed automatically. And so we bought the kits using a grant and assembled it with students and now three schools and a community garden, so four total places locally in Alabama have Farm Bots. And what we hope for is other schools see this Farm Bot and buy it and then use, basically connect kids with STEM education and gardening, growing food, becoming cool again, that's what we want. So, so things like that, we focused on another project that is basically a 3D printed, 3D printer that can repurpose used plastics, 3D printed plastics or plastic bottles mainly. So we have a shredder in a university lab, University of Alabama in Huntsville, they have a library that has a maker's lab. And this device can essentially shred, first it shreds plastics into tiny pieces, those pieces are then put into a melter that melts the plastic and extrudes it and it extrudes it as a 3D-printed filament, so you can repurpose plastic bits to 3D-printed filament and now print something new with your plastic waste bottles and that's another thing we've partnered with. So we focus on small-scale projects like that, which are easily replicable and, and hope that it catches on.
Yeah, no, that's super cool. I mean, it really, I feel like that's kind of touching on a lot of the things we're gonna go into and I'm super excited. Yeah, like all of, I think I've heard of some of those projects and I think that's so cool that you help support like students especially to get involved in that aspect, yeah. But I mean, I guess like maybe to start with just like Climate Engine, how did you, I guess like become a data or a geospatial data scientist and is it something that like you ever thought you would be doing before you actually got involved? I guess like also talk about how you translate data and tech into action.
Sure, sure, great question. So I'll start with my journey into college. I chose to study environmental science, Earth System Science is a technical degree name and then physics. And I honestly, going into college, I thought I was gonna be a physicist, but I took environmental science because I'm super passionate about sustainability and solutions to environmental issues. Thinking that I'd majorly be a physicist and do environmental science on the side, turned out the complete opposite, where physics is on the side and you know, computer it's now and then, but it's, it's not primarily involved in my career. I did two internships while in college, one was NASA developed throughout a semester that was focused on mapping water hazard and then invasive species in Lake Victoria in Kenya. And that used satellite data because I was sitting in Huntsville and then monitoring Lake Victoria in Kenya without ever having visited it, using satellite imagery, Landsat imagery. And that really opened my eyes to the possibility of using satellite data. I mean, you can monitor places without having been there and use satellite data to do things at scale. So I, at least that was my first step into geospatial data analysis and at that time we were using ArcGIS, so a software that's proprietary by Esri, but still really, really useful. And then I took two courses on GIS, geographic information systems and one was an intro, one was advanced, so I did a bunch of projects on different things like hydro power plants, mapping, species habitat mapping and so forth. And that was really interesting because I, I learned a lot about different themes through doing projects in them that were focused on using satellite data or data sets, geospatial data sets in general. Then I did an internship at Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution in 2018 that was focused more on marine policy and using math and economic models, climate models, but not geospatial data. So I also got that experience of non-geospatial, non-data science, but math and physics heavy and economics also, because we looked at how much value, economic value, does the reduction of uncertainty in carbon sequestration estimates have when considering the biological carbon pumps? So in oceans, there's a lot of carbon flowing from the surface down to the abyss and the estimates are from five to 12 billion tons a year.
Oh wow.
But five to 12 billion tons, that's seven billion tons of uncertainty and it depends on location as well, the latitude, longitude. So how much uncertainty reduction, how much value would that uncertainty reduction have? And that's, that was a whole month, semester, summer-long project.
Yeah.
But that was really exciting, but I thought geospatial data science was more applicable to my interests and I wanted to use that more. And then so out of college, after graduation in 2019, I got a job at UAH, University of Alabama in Huntsville and NASA partnership program called Impact. And Impact was under the NASA's Earth Science Division, funded by them, and UAH paid me to work there. So I did that for a year and a half and my role was to increase accessibility to NASA Earth data. So add-on metadata, correct things, make things more usable. And an exciting part of my job was prototyping new use cases of NASA data or NASA partnership data as well. And so two projects that I did that were really exciting in that job were identifying aircraft controls using Modus, that's a NASA satellite, Modus data and making a model and a dataset and a model in collaboration with a company called Devseed, Development Seed, to identify floating marine debris in coastal locations. So we made a completely new dataset on planet data, very high-resolution data that identified, automatically identified what floating marine, where floating marine debris exists near coasts and that was really cool. But I wanted to focus more on applied climate solutions and work at a company that not only did the research and made something novel, but actually used it for clients and made some direct impact with them. So I left a job in 2021, August 2021 and took a five-month break and in February 2022, I got this position at Climate Engine. But I'll say that the foundational steps and the building blocks of geospatial data science for my journey were through that NASA Impact job. Yeah, so that's how it began. And as far as translating data into action goes, at Climate Engine, we have clients who are mainly financial institutions and we want to translate visual and geospatial data, layers like wildfire risk layers, extreme heat layers, flood risk layers, all that into numbers that are assigned to locations, because communicating risk, you can communicate that via posters using a layer or have an interactive map layer where people can see their risk. But for clients, they want to do these things at scale, they, they may have millions or billions of locations and to communicate that you want basically an Excel sheet of risk to location. So data into action can, is very specific to the clients and to the audience that you want to target. If it's policymakers, you wouldn't do that, you would probably do on a city level or state level or whatever level there is. But for us, it's business locations, literally point locations and getting the risk levels extracted for each of those and it's giant spreadsheet. But, and then they can make decisions based on which locations have high risk, which locations have low risk, what should we do for the high-risk ones? And that's their decisions, is there, in their power? Our, our power is communicating that with the actual data.
Yeah, oh my gosh. And I mean, like you kind of briefly touched on this, but there's definitely certain levels of, you know, data to action applications, so, and I'm super excited to get into more of like your, your city applications later on. But just that in itself, I'm realizing now that kind of sounds like what my mom does in terms of like risk analysis and that's so cool. Yeah, yeah. Yes, bringing all of those experiences together and I mean, you also studied physics, but also then later on environmental science and also sociology, policy. In terms of like, I guess transitioning from college to your, I guess, to workforce or career, I guess, like what was that transition like and how did you find yourself applying your educational background to what you do today?
Great question. Initially, at least post-graduation immediately, I felt somewhat disconnected from my environmental science background and education and physics and the job I was doing at Impact. This was mainly because I was focused on a lot, learning a lot on computer science, data science and really not using enough domain knowledge from environmental science. Although I was working with Earth Data, NASA Earth and Environmental Data, I wasn't applying it as much as I am doing now. I wasn't using my environmental science domain knowledge to do applied science projects, basically. I was doing more data and computer science projects using Earth Data. But now at Climate Engine, I, I do use and learn, keep learning, different skills and topics within the environmental field, because by the nature of this job, we have to learn about things like extreme heat, extreme cold, drought analysis, drought science, but, but nature and biodiversity analysis. So we are doing a bunch of things and various themes across the environmental field and for each of that, there's a huge body of science for each of those hazards and topics that I either know somewhat before graduation or I'm learning actively. Like I had to work, work on a drought product and hydrology, I just took a one course in hydrology in college, so it wasn't enough to, you know, do this. But yeah, I had to read a bunch of papers, learn different metrics like standard based precipitation evaporate, evapotranspiration index or how it's calculated. I had to learn a lot while doing that project. So it's, it's much more scientific and science knowledge-focused and this job allows me to explore that and combine data science with environmental science quite frequently.
That's so cool. Yeah, I definitely would love to have an experience where I can really apply research with what I do continuously. Yeah, that's so cool. I mean, you also have a background in environmental activism. I mean, I'd love to get into like, how did you begin with that and I guess tangent to all of these things?
Yeah, no, good question. So that goes back to my life in India. So I grew up for 10 years in the city of Mumbai in India and Mumbai is, has 21 or 22 million people, so it's very heavily populated, very densely populated. And there is a lot of air and water pollution that I saw on a daily basis. So for example, I lived near a place somewhere I could see a river that was full of sewage, it was black in color, it smelled when you walked by it and you could see some piles of trash flowing in the river itself while going to school daily in an open-air rickshaw, it's a three-wheel vehicle. I used to cover my mouth and nose with the handkerchief because of the air pollution while in traffic or riding it. So those day-to-day experiences made me question, how can we humans live in a way that doesn't harm our planet and our surroundings, our environment? So, so my first activism experience I would say was in ninth or 10th grade, probably ninth grade, where I, I joined beach cleanups and after festivals in Mumbai and then 12th, 11th or 12th grade, I cannot remember exactly, there was a drive for reducing deforestation in, in a place that was one of the last remaining green spaces in Mumbai itself. So the city government wanted to cut that part of that region for a new metro shed. And we were basically protesting that because it's literally one of the last remaining green spaces, there are not enough at all. And then, yeah, I came here to Huntsville in 2015 and I, I did a lot of city work after 2017, city-based protests and so forth, but in 2018, there was the emergent, emergence of the Sunrise Movement, as you may already know. And my first experience ever was in DC in support of the Green New Deal in outside Nancy Pelosi's office where I got detained with a group.
Oh my gosh. How was that?
It was an interesting experience. I mean, I, I think initially, you know, I, I felt really hopeful because there's this huge crowd of young people, mainly below the age of 35, that are, that are really passionate about, you know, a climate positive future and it felt good to be a part of that. But I'll talk about this more later. There are some caveats and drawbacks of that approach, just protesting and not having a concrete policy goal, not having a concrete technical implementation goal. I think protesting is good in, in the sense that it raises awareness, but we have to go beyond that, beyond just simply raising awareness and raising our voices, we have to have a technical implementation and policy plan that should be passed if the protests are successful. And you know, the Green New Deal was great, but it was a set of resolutions and there are not many technical implementation paths at that time, because we were lobbying as well in, in the, to our congresspeople, congressmembers and, you know, I heard two of them say that this is, this sounds really good, but can you tell us some policies or implementation plans or what exactly is it that you want us to do besides just saying yes to a Green New Deal? But what does that mean? And you know, now there are many resources like project drawdown and project regeneration, which have concrete climate solutions and we need to map those to states, to cities and have real implementation plans that we fight for. So, so I think the Green New Deal is great, but we need localized plans that we need cities and states to follow, because each region and each place is different, it won't be a blanket approach. And I think that would be an ideal Green New Deal where it's, yes, there's some, some level of control from the federal government, but there is a huge flexibility in how that's implemented locally and to the, to the local needs, local economy, local environment.
Yeah, like when it, when I first kind of got into environmental work, like to be surrounded a lot by speakers, we definitely need people to be speaking about this issue and you know, definitely bringing awareness to it, but there's also that sense of like, what after? And so, yeah, no, I definitely, that really resonates. But yeah, I mean, I, like, I, I would love to get into that now. I mean, just like you've recently been doing a lot of really cool work on sustainability-related city policies and grassroots organizing. Can you tell us a little bit more about how that's going in terms of how do you create like sustainable city commissions and I guess also like introduce us to what that looks like and why it's important and to be in cities specifically?
No, great question. I'll, I'll start with the why it's important part and then go through the journey. So many cities, especially in the South and Southeast US, don't have commissions or even city departments that focus on how a city should grow sustainably. And yes, this can be misused and greenwashed because they could consider that as sustainable growth or how can we grow more and, and use more resources sustainably, which that's been the problem of corporations as well. But even that's not there, like there is no sustainability commission for many, many cities throughout the Southeast. And so there's no focus on public transportation, no focus on energy efficiency, no focus on conserving areas that are, you know, high, high in biodiversity or even just green spaces, no focus on mitigating or reducing the urban heat islands. So, so there are these many issues that are happening in cities and I live in Huntsville, Alabama and Huntsville is a really rapidly growing city. In the past five years, we've seen hundreds of new apartments, new buildings, green spaces being destroyed in front of my eyes. So I think city sustainability commissions are really important, keep that in check and not repeat the mistakes of urban growth, because we've seen them a lot. I mean, we've seen them throughout history, so why do the same mistakes when we know that there's a better way? So that's why city commissions are important, that focus exclusively on sustainability and even paid staff members in cities who focus on sustainability are, are really, really key. As far as how Huntsville got a sustainability commission, that's very recent development. In 2019, I joined a group that was focused on, a local Huntsville group that was focused on getting a sustainability ordinance through city council. And it was a journey of many, I would say three or four months. We started in summer of 2018 and then really planned a couple of protests outside city hall, hundreds of people had joined in Huntsville. And then we had a document that had what, that had at least like a wish list for city councils to have, adopt. But by the end of, I think, August or September 2018, we had a full ordinance draft. So basically we wrote an ordinance that was not perfect, but we wrote an ordinance to pass a sustainability commission that if voted on by city council and approved, that would make a commission. So we spoke, like the team of us who had planned the protests and planned this ordinance, we spoke at city council in support of that and there was initial support, but then right before COVID had, I think the city decided to not go for it and not do anything about it. So fast forward to 2021, there are many nonprofits, environmental nonprofits in Huntsville. Couple of the key ones I'll mention are the Land Trust of North Alabama and Alabama Rivers Alliance. So members from that, those organizations met along with other nonprofits and I was there and they, they were discussing how it would be cool to have a sustainability commission in Huntsville and my ears, I'm like, yeah. And thankfully I had a document with me, at least, at least electronic copy and I shared it with the Land Trust and the Alabama Rivers Alliance. And then over that year until 2022, we were refining the document, really going, you know, word for word, reviewing everything and even taking inspiration from other cities who have commissions like that, like Little Rock, Arkansas or Decatur, Atlanta or a couple of cities in Ohio also. But then in April 2022, I joined the Executive Director of the Land Trust and a couple of the board members to meet the mayor of Huntsville, whose name is Tommy Battle, and basically discuss and convince him to make, make a commission, give the ordinance draft and really like, here, here's the work, here's the ordinance, this is why it's important, because Huntsville is growing, we need to check urban growth, we have issues already of traffic, we don't want young people to be deterred by not, the city not being sustainable. And we thought it was gonna be a long back and forth, but he agreed pretty quickly and said it's a good idea. So then he created a study committee that was focused on various topics, public transportation, food sustainability, food security, energy efficiency, conservation and building efficiency. There was one more, but you can see Huntsville Sustainability Commission Report online. And basically that study committee lasted a year, they had all these themes and they basically gave recommendations on what Huntsville should do in each theme. And last year, as of three months ago, in November 2023, just, just recently, we had our, the sustainability commi- commission was established, that's a mayor's advisory commission and I happened to be selected, so I was fortunate. And yeah, we're a team of architects, designers, environmental data scientists and even food researchers who are focused on advising the mayor on policies to enable long-term sustainability in Huntsville, along the themes that were discussed. So, so now the commission is in action and it's a thing, it's, it's actually a thing. So it, it took a long time, but I will say what helped was having connections, like the nonprofit connections, that knew the mayor from before, had a good relationship. And me being in the room didn't matter as much as the Executive Director of the Land Trust of North Alabama, who is a strong voice, she knew the mayor eight years, for eight years, I believe. And so having someone who has a existing relationship with any of the city members who you want to convince, bring them to the table, you know, have them lead the conversation and things will generally go pretty well. So, so that's the key lesson I learned.
Yeah, that's really good advice. I feel like more I think about it, it's just important to really get personal with it in order to actually, you know, no.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're just people and they need convincing. Again, congrats on the establishment of that after so long. But yeah, no, thank you for sharing that advice. Yeah. In addition to that, you are also, you know, you work as environmental educator, both on YouTube and I think you've taught some like previous courses. Can you tell us more about your work with your video content and like how that began and your process and whatnot?
Sure, sure. So while I was in college in 2017 through the end of my graduation, I helped teach a course. I helped teach a course on air and water pollution. And before that, I was also tutoring environmental science and physics for a couple of years. But this course was focused, it was a three under-level junior course on air pollution, water pollution, and a li- little bit of climate science. There were a few chapters on that, but not not that that was not the focus. So I I will say I co-taught some classes uh with my professor. And that experience was really cool because I got to learn and then teach, right? It it, I mean, I I can't teach something if I don't know the subject and really intimately. And I had to also grade the papers and and
Right, right.
tests. So so I had to know the topics really well. And um I really enjoyed learning and then teaching um and helping students. Because um I I just enjoyed communicating things and it made me a better speaker. And I got a really good feedback and then improved over time. So after graduation, I was thinking, how can I still teach or edu- like keep up that education um outlet? And and one answer, a good answer to scale that was YouTube, making videos and and releasing on YouTube. So that's how it started. And then if you watch my videos from twenty nineteen to or twenty twenty, it's pretty embarrassing. Yeah, I I wouldn't watch them, but but yeah, it it started off just as me recording some lectures and me doing some really rough and videos that were not that well-edited. And over time, I got feedback, I improved, and and now I'm more proud of it than before. So so yeah, uh that's how it got started. And and I fo- I try to focus on um issues and solutions in the same video. So I I try not to just focus on the problem. I really want people to get an idea that there are things they can do, there are things we can do um to contribute to solutions. So my content is primarily focused on what is the problem, why it's important, and then what can we do with the really concrete resources?
Hmm.
It's not vague, it's not, it's not what everyone says we should reduce emissions, reduce fossil fuels, everyone knows that. But what specifically can you do um in your city? What specifically can you do in your job? Uh what are some examples? And that's what what I hope to offer and I've been focused on.
Yeah, no, that's that's something I really appreciate personally because there's plenty of content out there to explain, you know, what the issues are. But again, like, I feel like this goes back to what we were talking about earlier. It's just not much laying out what to do after that. Um so yeah, I really appreciate that aspect of your work, looking on your career overall. In addition to technical skills, like some of just just like maybe life lessons that you've picked up.
Hmm, life lessons. Yeah, yeah, no, great question. One big life lesson is if you don't ask, you don't get. So don't be afraid to ask for things, whether it's collaborations, reaching out to people, cold emailing someone who you admire and want to learn from. Um you know, if I if I hesitated to do that, I wouldn't be at Climate Engine or I wouldn't even have gotten the NASA Impact job before. Uh I'd say making connections has been the most vital part of my career. Um grades matter i- initially at least, that's fine. But it's also about knowing the right people and then having contact with them at the right time or wrong time, and then it becomes the right time. Uh so an example is at Climate Engine, I knew a person who who knew another employee at Climate Engine. And she introduced me um in November or December twenty twenty-two, or not, twenty twenty-one. She introduced me in November uh November twenty twenty-one to an employee at Climate Engine via email and sent my resume. And Climate Engine looked at it, um said it looks good, but at the moment, they were not hiring.
Hmm.
Uh but three months later, they reach out to me and ask if I'm still looking for a job. And I was, I I was still on my break. And um lo and behold, after two rounds of interviews, I got in. So basically, connections really matter. Um and build your network. Don't fe- feel afraid to or hesitate to ask for help or a- advice or whatever. And uh keep meeting people within the field, be kind, be humble, and and really learn from other people. And that's, I I think that's what's helped me a lot in in my journey. Um and along with the motivation to learn as much as I can, I am always open to learning new things and learning from anywhere and anyone. So um yeah, learn from anywhere and anyone. Don't feel afraid to ask anything and and um bu- build your network, connect with people.
That's really great advice. Thank you so much for that. In terms of what you do today, do you have any like favorite or least favorite aspects of what you do? And I guess like maybe provide some insights on that.
Hmm, okay. Do you mean anything or just at Climate Engine or?
Anything, yeah.
Um. Uh, okay, so favorite aspect is I get to apply domain knowledge, environmental science knowledge, occasionally math knowledge, um in combination with data science and projects at Climate Engine, which I really enjoy. Because it's a continuous learning process, I don't feel like I'm stagnant and monotonous. Uh you know, every day, almost every day, I feel like I learned something new, which is great.
Hmm.
So I enjoy that aspect of my job at Climate Engine uh in geospatial data science. As far as what I don't enjoy or least favorite aspect, it's not necessarily related to the job tasks themselves i- in any, even while video editing, you know. This is just, I spend way too much time on the screen. And uh physiologically, it's not great.
Hmm.
So I've had some lower back issues before and eye strain. Um and that's just because I spend a lot of time on the screen, whether it's for my job, for video editing, for YouTube, for even some mycelium tasks. So I I have to balance it out forcefully with things like hiking, going outside, um playing some sports outside. I've gotten to pickleball recently. I play badminton occasionally. Um yeah, but I it's really necessary to be outside and and find time away from the screen. We have to add it into our calendars, at least for me. So that's a drawback, I'd say. Over time, in the long term, I'd like to have a much better balance between computer work and non-computer work. But yeah, um but o- overall, I really enjoy what I do and I'm learning a lot, so it's great.
Yeah, no, definitely. Me too, me too. Uh I definitely wanna, I need to go outside and touch more grass.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, exactly.
No, I feel like we we could all use that sometimes. And especially like, I feel like so much of what we do now is online, so but like, that's definitely something to keep in mind, yeah.
Even like art conversation, if if I was closer, I'd rather have it in.
No, me too. Yeah, that's something I'd like to do someday for sure. Um yeah, no, but I mean, I guess like, this is also kind of related somewhat. But like in terms of your, you know, you've you've made a lot of um resources and been able to share them online um on LinkedIn. And I guess like what other resources or advice would you recommend to listeners um that want to get into climate careers in general? Or just, I mean, like, get involved with what you do? Yeah.
Yeah, um that's pretty much what I share on LinkedIn, climate career resources and geospatial data science and occasional videos that I make. But overall, I'll say now than ever before, there are many, many good, great websites for climate careers that didn't exist when I graduated. Uh examples include Climate Base, uh there's a connection Slack channel called Work on Climate, that's amazing. Uh there's climitechcareers.com. Um I have a whole video dedicated to how resources for finding climate jobs. And you can find most of those on that on that video on the YouTube channel. Uh as far as geospatial data science resources goes, there are many great uh tutorials for Google Earth Engine, for Python, uh libraries that that focus on geospatial data analysis. Uh there are many courses now on uh even U Demy has some courses. But I'll recommend uh mainly some free ones and web- webinars by uh an organization called Spatial Thoughts. That's at least what I use for Google Earth Engine, so check those out. Um and then on my LinkedIn, you can find basically uh posts of five or six resources at a time uh on geospatial data analysis tutorials or resources that I've used or recommend. So yeah, I I'd say check out the LinkedIn page, check out my YouTube channel. And uh everything's free, obviously. I'm not here to make money off of what I share. Um for people seeking climate careers and who want to talk to professionals i- i- already in climate careers like myself, there's a hashtag you can find on LinkedIn called hashtag Open Door Climate.
Hmm.
It's one word, and it was started by Daniel Hill from the Environmental Defense Fund. And it's a really great resource for professionals and job seekers and climate careers uh to connect with each other. So I've met many people uh through Open Door Climate who were, who asked me about my journey and what to learn for geospatial data science or just how to get a climate career and find out, figure that out itself. So you can meet people one-on-one through that uh just by messaging them through LinkedIn and and booking a time. So I'd recommend using hashtag Open Door Climate.
Yeah, no, I came across that resource recently, actually, and then I I also one hundred percent recommend it. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Yeah, I love it. It's really cool.
Yeah, and I'll definitely link those resources and uh your your YouTube channel and your platforms and whatnot in the video description. Um and I mean, I guess like to close off, it's a question I ask every episode. Um if you could turn back time butterfly effects aside and um tell your younger self something that you've learned from life so far, career and or personal. Um and this could be like any stage of life, um what would you say to them?
Yeah, no, really, really interesting question. Uh. When I was young, I used to be afraid to ask for things and um hesitate for things that I wanted, but I I couldn't ask because of shame or fear. I would say don't hesitate to ask for things you want or need um from other people. Of course, that's a, there is, there probably needs to be a value exchange between you and the other person. But if you're really passionate about something or want something for a greater purpose, um ask, just ask. And the worst they can say is no. It's okay. But but if you don't ask, how would they know? Um so don't hesitate to ask for things, for sure. And then second would be, it's really cheesy and many people say this, but really I I I don't want to say follow your passion, follow your Ikigai is what I'll say.
Hmm.
And Ikigai is a really great Japanese concept, you might know, that intersects uh four, four circles. It it means, it li- literally means reason for being, and that reason for being can change day-to-day. Uh but long term, I like this approach, uh which I've seen many arti- in many articles and even the book Ikigai. Uh what does the world need? That's the first pillar, first circle. Um what are you really passionate about? What do you enjoy doing? Second pillar. Third is, what are you good at? Um what skills or what background, what wha- whatever are you good at? And four is uh practically speaking, what can earn, what can make you earn a living or what what can sustain you? Um so the intersection of those four is the Ikigai uh in the long term. And um find it, define it, and follow it. And uh I would I would say that to my younger self.
That's really great advice. Thank you so much for that. For listeners who want to keep up with the work that you do, where can they find you?
Yeah, great question. So I I direct listeners and viewers to uh one, if you want to check out my YouTube channel, uh it has a bunch of resources that you can find, again, all free. And then second, um I, if you're interested in geospatial data science and the technical stuff, um my LinkedIn page is focused more on that. Uh where I share data sources, tutorials, geospatial data examples, and even some videos and climate career resources. So check out my LinkedIn profile and my YouTube channel. That's the main areas where I'm active. I am trying to grow more on Instagram this year uh through educational reels. Uh but yeah, you can also find me on Instagram. It's a small account, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um yeah, and I really learned so much from this conversation. Um thank you so much for taking the time to be here today.
Thank you for having me and and it's an honor to speak to you and it's a great podcast. Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.